Can lead us in prayer?
Sis Massey, Madam Speaker. Uga gogona tafanugi, da tafantekung, da ta ekungu, iginagau isaina, dan ina inisaina. Ginanitata lehinye dan espiritu san tu, amen. Dus tata intingua na todu inilatla, dan iminaulik, gininhogo. Ingagago na binaksepta todu ininaimu, bintzili i nu finanaguemu ni unoyam in hemplu, as Jesus laimu anima momoket gueni gitano. Igunay dan inanonya, dan inanomu si Maria, ingagago lukui na si guru na in baba kurasun momi dan in recebi esti, nanina igininhogo. Anginin ekungu, dan intatidzi, iginunoyam. Manmaulik sempri moona inatan momi, lihinasun momi, dan itiatu momi. Enau ingagago gininhogo ilahimo as Jesus, dan inanonya as Maria. Isaina Massey. Ginanitata lehinye dan espiritu san tu, amen.
Thank you very much, Speaker Pangalinen. Can I ask Senator Munia Barnes if he can lead us in the recitation of Inefesi?
Taklulu lihinasoku, himastaklulu gi kurasan tu. Dan imasfigu nyanyashinyahu, u efesi maesaju, parabayu protehi, za hudi fene i hinenge, i kutura, i lengwahi, i aire, i haniom dan itanu Chamor. Nirenshaku di retu ginejju, sata esti u fitma gi hilu biblia, dan ivanderahu ivandera nguahan.
Thank you, Senator. And for the singing of Guam hymn in Chamor, I'd like to ask Senator Mike Lintiako and the singing of the National Anthem by Senator Tom Ada.
(Singing) Chamor, Uli Chamora, Wampat yatu na nyari tolu. Ara iona, ara i toya, Abiba isla senpara. Ara iona, ara i toya, Abiba isla senpara. O yuvi tempo iba, paraita, dan ge lani taben. O tra ki ru, napansapuha, tus protei isanwong. O tra ki ru, napansapuha, tus protei isanwong. Oh say, can you see, light on early light? What so proudly we hailed, at the twilight's last beaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars, through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched, were so gallant to scream. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh say, the stars are strangled, and are yet waiting, for the land of the free, and the home of the brave.
Thank you very much, Senators. The clerks, please take role. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada.
Good morning, President.
Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duennas. Senator Lintiako. Senator McCready. Senator Morrison. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Pangalinen. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Siniklis. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashida. Madam Speaker, there is a forum. Thank you very much. Mr. Majority Leader, Senator Rispisho, you're recognized for some motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated August 29, 2013, subject to corrections.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that Communications and Petitions be appended to the Sessions Journal.
Hearing objections, ordered.
And I move that any messages from Imagalang Guahan be appended to the Sessions Journal.
Hearing objections, ordered.
As well as standing committees, Madam Speaker, I move that they be appended to the Sessions Journal, these committee reports.
No objections, ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees, so on Item 12, on the introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 17732COR through Bill Number 21532-COR be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered.
And I move that Resolution Number 208-32LS be given its first reading.
No objections, ordered.
And I move that Resolution 209-32COR through Resolution 262-32COR be given its first reading.
No objections, ordered.
As well as Certificate Numbers 5732COR through Certificate Number 73-32COR also be given its first reading.
Objections, ordered.
Madam Speaker, on your motions, yesterday we had a Committee on Rules meeting, and we placed 50 bills, and I believe 10 confirmations on the session agenda, to which you're seeing in the second reading file. I would like to request, respectfully request, that we, at the request of Senator McCready, that we add Bill 99. It's an act to amend subsection 80.60 of Article 4, Chapter 80, Title IX, GCA, relative to clarifying minimum sentences for crimes. I'd like to request that this be placed at the second reading file.
And...
Maybe at the bottom of the second reading file.
Okay, after Bill Number 209. Hearing objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, my first motion is procedural, in that when we do get to the second reading file, if the sponsor needs more time or requires some of the answers to be, questions to be answered, that you, as always, would set that bill aside. It doesn't lose its place on the agenda, and at such time, the sponsor is ready to reconvene on that matter, that you will call that to the body's attention. So we need that to you to ensure that we have a smooth flow of our legislative business.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered.
And any resolution or certificate introduced for the duration of this session that's congratulatory or condolence in nature be adopted, that all senators be cosponsors, and that the sponsor work with our legal counsel and the clerk's office in the preparation of these documents.
No hearing objections, ordered.
Madam Speaker, at this time, I ask any of our colleagues if there are any override attempts, and I would defer to anyone wishing to do that this time. Any overrides?
Any overrides? There being none, then Senator Rispisho, on legislative concurrence?
Yeah, no, thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, from the Committee on Education, Public Library, Women's Affairs and Women's Affairs, on your committee's report on the nomination of Krishan Serengen to serve as a member of the Guam Public Library Board for a term of three years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to the following position per the Governor's Letter, beginning on July 30, 2013, with your, Madam Speaker, your committee's recommendation to confirm my move that this be placed in the voting file.
Any objections? There being none, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, also from your committee, the same committee, on the nomination of Ms. Deborah Ballinger to serve as a member of the GCC Board of Trustees for a term of five years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to the following position per Governor's Letter, beginning on May 24, 2013, with your committee's recommendation to confirm my move that that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, ordered.
Madam Speaker, from the Vice Speaker's Committee on, from the Senator Addus Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation, on the nomination of Mr. Andrew Nevin to serve as the Commissioner of the Public Tillese Commission for a term of six years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to this position per the Governor's Letter, beginning on June 14, 2013, with Senator Tom Addus Committee's recommendation to confirm my move that that be placed in the voting file.
Any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Also from Senator Tom Addus Committee, on the nomination of Ms. Philomena Cantoria to serve on the same commission, the PUC, for a term of six years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to that position per the Governor's Letter, beginning on June 20, 2013, with Senator Tom Addus Committee's recommendation to confirm my move that this be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
Thank you. From Speaker Ben's Pangalinen's Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and Land, on the nomination of Mr. Larry Lawrence S. Rivera to serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission for a term of five years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to that position for a term beginning May 23, 2013, with Speaker Ben Pangalinen's Committee's recommendation to do confirm my move that that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
From Senator Rodriguez's Committee on Health and Human Services, Health Insurance Reform, Economic Development, and Senior Citizens, on the nomination of Quadencia Burns to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Social Work for a term of three years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the laws of Guam applicable to that position per the Governor's Letter, beginning on September 27, 2013, with Senator Rodriguez's Committee's recommendation to do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Also from Senator Rodriguez's Committee, on the nomination of Mr. Alex Salvario to serve at the same board for a term of three years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to that position per the Governor's Letter, beginning on June 13, 2013, with Senator Rodriguez's Committee's recommendation to do confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Also from Senator Rodriguez's Committee, on the nomination of Ms. Vera Wu to serve as a member of GITA's Board of Directors for a term of four years as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the laws applicable to the following position per the Governor's Letter, beginning on September 16, 2013, with Senator Rodriguez's Committee's recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
From Senator Mike's Nicholas's Committee on Aviation, Ground Transportation, Regulatory Concerns, and Future Generations, on the nomination as of BIC, to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors for a term of three years defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to that position, beginning on October 2, 2013, with Senator Nicholas Committee's recommendation to confirm my move that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator?
On Item 9, the Oversight Chair and the Vice Speaker would like us to verify whether or not BIC is serving the unexpired term, or if he gets a full three-year term. So we would be clear at the time of voting exactly what position he'll be filling. So we ask the legal counsel to assist in that regard.
So should we then not then place in the calendar until we get clarification?
Well, I guess we can make the correction now that he's filling the unexpired term of who? Of Mr. Frank Santos.
Okay, so on that motion, without any objections? So ordered.
Yeah, thank you. And for Item 10, I want to make a correction, that the committee's recommendation was to report out only, so I'll read it how it should be read, from Senator Tom Addus Committee on Public Safety, Infrastructure, and Maritime Transportation, on the nomination of Eduardo R. Ilaw to serve as a member of the Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors at the pleasure of the Governor, as defined by the Organic Act of Guam and the local laws applicable to that position per the Governor's Letter, beginning on May 2, 2013, with Senator Tom Addus Committee's recommendation to report out only, and there'd like to be some discussion on this nomination.
Thank you, Senators. So on the appointment, anyone who would like to speak then on this particular appointment? Mr. Chairman? You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Regarding the appointment of Mr. Eduardo Ilaw to the Board of Directors of the Port Authority of Guam, although the public hearing, the confirmation hearing on this nominee was held approximately, I believe, two months ago, I don't have the committee report in front of me right now. The committee has delayed reporting out this particular nomination, simply because it was following up on verifying certain information that was provided at the confirmation hearing. One in particular was the, a complaint testimony that was provided from Mr. Joe Sorvino regarding a complaint that he had filed with the Board of Professional Licensor up at the CNMI regarding the nominee, Mr. Ilaw. More specifically, the complaint that he had filed was, well, he had mentioned in there the fact that, that Mr. Ilaw was providing engineering services up at the CNMI without a business license and all that. But probably, the committee wasn't looking at that, more so what we really wanted to verify, the allegation that the witness had made, that the nominee was in fact using his professional engineering registration and rubber stamping, what is called rubber stamping, engineering drawings. Out here in Guam, the law specifically prohibits that. We found through our inquiry with the CNMI that their law also does not, prohibits that. Unfortunately, in the inquiry that the committee had made to the CNMI Board of Professional Licensor, they, their response finally came back after about a couple of months, and did not, and unfortunately, the response did not acknowledge whether, in fact, they received this complaint. And the board, in their response, basically said, "Sorry, we are not allowed to give out any information about any investigations or findings that have been made regarding a complaint." And so, basically, then the committee really was not able to, you know, get a clear clarification as to was in fact a complaint registered with the board, and what was the outcome of that. And so, that largely is the reason why a delay, there was a delay in reporting out this particular nomination. The, so I just wanted to explain that that was the reason for the delay. I also wanted to explain, make sure, the fact that in the committee report, the majority of the members that were voting voted to report out only, and leave it on the floor for the members to discuss and to decide on their own whether Mr. Ilaw should be nominated or, should be confirmed or not. And so... And so, as the, as the committee chair, I went ahead and simply voted to just report out. And I did that without taking a definitive stance at the time that the committee report came out, because I really did not want to bias the votes of the other members. If it would come up to vote today, I will state that despite the close relationship that I have with the Ilaw family, despite the close relationship that I have with Mr. Ilaw, I cannot in good conscience vote for his confirmation for several other reasons. One, during the confirmation hearing, I was really disappointed by the responses that I got from the nominee. There was a testimony that was provided by an individual, Mr. David Dixara, who basically said, he did not say whether he was for or against the nomination, but basically he says, "Look, ask Mr. Ilaw what he thinks of what is going on at the port, because in his view, in the witness's view, there was enough things that were going on down there that that port was going to implode." Okay, fine. When the nominee came up for the question and answer, I personally asked him, "Are you aware of these allegations that the witness was making?" And basically, his response was, "I really don't know what goes on beyond the boardroom, and anything that goes on out in the yard is really a matter between the general manager and the employees." He just focuses in on the, on basically policy matters within the board. And I found that a little disturbing, because I always felt that policies are based on, are founded on basically what's going on in the organization. And so if you're totally blind or oblivious to what's going on out there, then how can you put yourself in a position to really make sound policy decisions? Then, so I, for me, that caused me a lot of concern. There was a lot of questions that were asked, and basically, the response was, "I don't know." The response was, "No, I'm not aware." You know, just kind of like, "Are you there or not?" And then finally, of course, most recently, a, an oversight hearing was held on the procurement activities down at the port. And unfortunately, it was a procurement for a mobile X-ray scanner, which amounted to about $1.2 million. And, you know, the paper trail just basically, there was, you know, showed that there was an initial attempt to make a sole source procurement to the company that is owned by the nominee. And, and so, again, that kind of, you know, really has taken me aback. Now, I realize that if, in fact, I had doubts in my mind, I should have called Mr. Ilaw and said, you know, "I think we better sit down and discuss this." But, you know, I think also it's just as much incumbent on the nominee, that if he feels that, that he feels strong enough about serving on that board, and he feels that there were statements made that would have put doubts in the minds of the policymakers down here, that, you know, you better step forward too and say, "Here's my side of the story." Never saw that. So unfortunately, I'm just, just not convinced, and I know that Mr. Ilaw has done a lot of good things for this community. I just don't think that he, he really should stay, sit on that board. And I think this is very important today, because the board, the port right now is going through a very tumultuous period in its, in its growth. For the longest time, for decades, it was just kind of, you know, muddling along. Now with this modernization efforts that's underway, it's going to get ramped up to the next level, to its next level of activity. And, and you, and when it, now that they are in that phase, you've got to make sure that the policymakers that are, that are down there are fact, in fact, fully engaged, so that they can guide that organization through during this chaotic period. And I just don't feel that, that, that is there with Mr. Ilaw. So as we go along then, when it comes time for voting, unfortunately, I will not be able to give my support for Mr. Ilaw. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Ada. So on the motion then to place the appointment of Mr. Ilaw on the voting file, without any objections, so ordered, oh, so sorry, yes.
Madam Speaker, when I moved the nomination to the voting file, it should have been to serve a three-year term, not at the pleasure of the Governor. So I'd like for the record to reflect that it is a three-year appointment.
Okay. Clerks, are you able?
And the...
So can we, please get clarification for the clerks?
The term should, should read, because it's a staggered term down there, when Mr. Ilaw's term had expired, then the clock on the new term started to run. And so I believe he's like, "Oh, this term now that he's being appointed to," I believe, is about six months into, no, actually, it's 10 months into the term that he's being appointed to now. So in essence, his term will only be for a period of the balance of that three years. It'll be about 22 months. He's actually, he would actually be filling, he was reappointed to the position that he was filling, so his appointment will actually be to fill the position that he, that he had, was filling. Unlike, for example, it was very clear of another nominee, that when he came down from the Governor's Office, they clarified that that other nominee was to fill the vacant seat of a, and the Governor named the specific seat that he was filling.
Thank you, Senator. And clerks, were you able to get that information? Thank you. So on the, yes, the discussion and the confirmation of Mr. Ilaw, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I too will not be voting in favor of the nomination or appointment of Mr. Ilaw to the Port Authority Board. I recognize that Mr. Ilaw has done exceptional work throughout the community, in the Red Cross, and some other places on island. My concern, Madam Chair, is just to this board, and to any board where he has any business dealings, I really do think that it's ethically inappropriate for him to serve on the board. If you go to his website, they have projects that he's completed, and on the websites you can see pictures of projects that he's completed at the Port Authority of Guam fairly prominently, that he announces on his website. Authority of Guam fairly prominently that he announces on his website. And so I really like what happened in the late '90s when he was serving on the GPA Board and the auditor noted at the end of the audit report for three fiscal years in a row that a board member had been doing business with the power of authority and then he was finally removed after the administration finally saw that on the audit report. I really don't think that any person should serve on a board where they're conducting business. He may say that he's not out there purposely pushing himself, but when decisions are being made and the choices are between a board member's company or some company where the board member has some interest and some, and another company, it's just self-interest. I mean, it's just survival by the administrations of a management of the companies that would decide, I mean, of the agency to go with the member who, I mean, the company that's owned by a board member. And so I would love to see him on some other board where he wouldn't be having any business because I think he does have a lot to contribute, even at the university, unless he was going to do business up there with some of the things up there. But as an engineer, he'd probably add greatly to the discussion on the establishment of the engineering school. But I just don't think it's appropriate for someone who's doing business with the agency to also be on the board. So I will not be voting, and I indicated so in the voting sheet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. Senator Esposito, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also rise to register my no vote for this nominee, and I sincerely ask our colleagues to do the same, not only for the comments expressed by the Vice Speaker as well as the Oversight Chair, and not only from the things that we've uncovered through the various oversight hearings that Chairman Ada had over the last several months, but more so specifically on the public hearing regarding this nominee. I would like to call the body's attention to a letter that was dated October 25, 2013, and it was provided to the committee by Ms. Mary Torres, which really presents a dispassionate perspective, I believe, and very factual presentation on some of the rebuttals that she's made to counter what the nominee had said during the public hearing. And she writes, "With regard to the violations of the Open Government Act, Senator McCready asked Elau on the third paragraph that said you violated the Open Government Act or the board violated the Open Government Act on four occasions. Are you aware of that? And in your mind, you are aware of that and it happened, did you consider it improper? Mr. Elau's response was, 'Senator, I deny any and all wrongdoings in regards to any and all allegations that were brought forward here before this committee by Ms. Torres and Ms. Mano.'" And so Ms. Torres writes, "For information, the four specific meetings I referenced were convened as follows, and I'm aware there are three emails between the board members about these meetings. Two, June 22, 2012, at 8:00 a.m. at Shirley's Coffee Shop in Agania. The topic of discussion was the PUC crane purchase. There was another meeting on July 23, 2012, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 to 12:30 p.m. at Phillips and Bredalio Law Offices. That meeting was held to discuss the YTK matter. And the fourth meeting that Mr. Elau participated in that was in clear violation of the Open Government Act was October 19, 2012, at 11:00 a.m., also at the Phillips and Bredalio Law Offices, and the workers' compensation claim of B. Menno was discussed at that meeting. As you may recall, I testified that in further violation of the Open Government Act, Ed Elau had a tape recording to be turned off for a portion of the December 5, 2012 Executive Session Board Meeting, as evidenced in the minutes of that meeting during the August 8, 2013 confirmation hearing." And then Ms. Torres writes, "Senator McCready asked Elau, quote, 'My next questions would be on December 5 testimony where the tape recorder was turned off, or a portion of the tape recorder was turned off,' and she said that the Executive Session Board Meeting, as evidenced in the minutes, can you explain on that? Elau's response, quote, 'We probably decided to take a recess or go to the restroom or have some coffee. I'm not sure. You know, I mean, a lot of times in our board meetings, we take at least two hours and we go into executive session. We take, we just need to take a recess. And of course, when you take a recess, you turn off the recording,' end quote." So Ms. Torres writes, "It is disingenuous of Elau to make such comment when the minutes of the Executive Committee meeting of December 5, 2012, that was approved by the board, records this occurrence as I presented to your committee. A portion of those minutes are copied below for your convenience." And she begins to share with the committee what the portion of that transcript is, and she writes, "Ms. Gibson, Shelley Gibson said, 'Want this off.' Then there was a whisper, 'Ms. Palletto, what are you doing?' Question mark. At this time and for unknown reasons, the recording was stopped during discussions with Mr. Pangolinan. At this time, the Deputy General Manager Anisha B. Trelawney was present in executive session. A read of the transcript will show that the board was not recessed when the tape recorder was turned off, and there is no official record of the discussion with Mr. Pangolinan, the harbor master, or the discussion that led up to Anisha Trelawney being summoned by the board to sit in the December 5, 2012 reconvened executive session. Another point made by Elau on August 8, 2013 regarding employee adverse action that is contradictory to action taken by him at the December 5, 2012 board meeting is as follows. Elau, quote, 'We don't necessarily direct employees and we don't fire employees. It was the GM's prerogative to do that. We don't. We are not even consulted when that happened.' Senator McCready, quote, 'But you would be able to make recommendations, correct?' Elau, quote, 'We were just as surprised when we found out about the layoffs.' And then Ms. Torres writes, "The December 5, 2012 Executive Session transcripts contain lengthy discussion about taking adverse action against employees. See one of those comments below. There's a regular board meeting, November 28, 2012." And all of these are provided on the Port Authority's website, Madam Speaker and colleagues. And so she begins to copy a section of that November 28 regular board meeting that was reconvened December 3 and December 5, 2012, and it's page 52 of 64. And the transcript is Personnel Matters Regarding Workers' Compensation Claim Report Exhibit Civil Service Commission. Chairman, quote, "That the only route we have at this point, unless somebody can find a different route, we have to get, if we want to proceed with this, then we have to get a GM in place that's not going to challenge the findings of facts, not going to do the issuance of it that's conflicted on it. We are going to have to get a GM in place in an acting capacity and say, 'This is what these notices of proposed adverse action has to go out today, and you're from the start to finish on this.'" The discussion with Felix Pangolinan was not captured and transcribed as a tape recorder was turned off during that time. However, the direction of the board was made clear to Anisha Trelawney, who was summoned to the meeting after Felix Pangolinan. And again, Ms. Torres provides the record below. "At this time, the Deputy General Manager Anisha B. Trelawney was present in executive session, VC. We basically had through their investigation and came up with adverse action going to be done on a number of employees. Today is the last day of the timeframe to do the adverse action. Mary is, now you should understand that you and Mary are both listed in this report that you're signing off, okay? However, Mary contested to a great degree, but that means that we still need a general manager to issue the notice of adverse action. So that means if Mary's, upon Mary's leaving, then we can point you as general manager and then you're going to sign off, can sign off on notices of proposed adverse action and bring them in. You're willing to do that? Deputy General Manager, yeah. VC, well, that's what's going to happen, have to happen then. You're going to have to, well, have a meeting after this to propose adverse action. It's all geared up and ready. You're doing, you're going to have to serve today, and then that's what the clock starts ticking with regards to DGM for response, for their response. Now, because you're in it, it may be, we may have to have you designate somebody else to do the, just the hearing of it, right, just to ensure nothing gets muddied up, right? As general manager, she can do that. This personnel matter was well orchestrated by the board, and the minutes of the November 28, 2012 meeting reconvened on December 3 and 5 of 2012 shows that the board did not afford the general manager the prerogative of whether to take adverse action. It was clear from the minutes of the meetings that the board directed the adverse actions, and for Elau to suggest that the board was not even consulted is untrue." So Ms. Torres requested that her testimony be made as a supplement to the committee report, which the chairman has done. And so, Madam Speaker, I'm really hoping that our colleagues take a stand against this particular nominee to send a signal that the legislature does vet these nominees out and that when an individual is confirmed to a board or commission, it is because of the utmost confidence that we have in that individual's ability. I just want to say for the record, there's just too much going on with this individual. He presented himself, as was pointed out, in a very, he wasn't very forthright, Madam Speaker, when he was asked those questions and the answers he gave. And then you saw that the minutes of the board meetings do not really, are not, are not in the same line of what he said at that hearing. And so I rise to oppose his nomination, and I certainly ask our colleagues to do the same.
Thank you, Senator Esposito. On the nominations, is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none. And I want to make sure, of course, that the language in which the clerks would be able to record as part of the journal is that for the nominations or appointments that are reported out for the committee should really be formatted as follows and to make sure then that this is done correctly. One is that then the committee's name, which we have hereby reports out the nomination of the individual and that of the individual who's serving for a term of, and then the number of years, which of course, Mr. Chairman and, rather, the Chair of COR and also the Chair of the committee, so that we can make sure we get the right term of years as defined. So we would cite that by the code section, beginning on the date of the appointment as whatever position is being held or name for person being replaced, which expires on the date of expiration of original term with a recommendation to do confirm. So I please want to make sure then that the clerks, that you have the language then in place. Thank you. So there, so there being then no other discussions and the motion is to place then the nominee at the voting file with no objections then, so ordered. We will now proceed to the second reading file. And I'd like to, the Chair recognizes Senator Tony Adatun, Bill Number 146-32.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion, move Bill 146 LS as amended by the Committee on U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs and Judiciary to the third reading file to speak on the motion, please.
On that motion, and you would like to speak, then you may proceed, Senator. And, but this is the bill though that is as amended?
Yes, as amended. And this is an act to add a new Article III to Chapter 37 of 9 GCA relative to Castle Doctrine.
Okay. And as amended by the Committee on U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security and Veterans Affairs and Judiciary. So Senator, yes, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 146 is relatively a simple bill that seeks to reinforce a simple concept, and that is people's homes are their castles, and they have a right to defend themselves and their loved ones from criminal intruders without fear of reprisal. Madam Speaker, an internet search will turn up examples of victims of break-ins who have either been prosecuted for shooting an intruder or have been sued by the perpetrator who got shot while invading a victim's home. Victims who used defensive force had to prove that they reasonably felt the need to do so. Most of these examples occurred before castle doctrine laws became prevalent in the U.S. Our current laws here provide for the use of force in self-defense. Our laws also state that we have a duty to retreat in the face of danger before we can use defensive force. In other words, we should go and cower in the dark when someone breaks into our home and hope that nothing happens to us and hope that we don't get killed. What the law needs to say, Madam Speaker, is that a person's home is a place where the legal occupant is entitled to certain prosecute, from certain prosecutions and immunities, and allows that occupant to use force against an intruder without retreating. The law should say that it presumes that the use of defensive force is both reasonable and necessary when a criminal is breaking into our occupied homes, cars, or place of business. The burden of proof must favor the victims and not the criminals because our people are entitled to the presumption of defensive force to protect themselves and their loved ones. The law should say that our people will not be prosecuted for using defensive force, nor will they be sued by injured criminal intruders or their families. Madam Speaker, Bill 146 does exactly that. Bill 146 would put the law on the side of law-abiding Guamanians. Our people need to know that the law is on their side when they respond with force against criminal intruders. Madam Speaker, I urge my colleagues to vote in favor of Bill 146, and after we pass it, I will urge the governor to sign it into law. And I hope that the criminal elements on this island learn that it is law. Forty-five states have laws that protect their citizens from liability for using defensive, for using defensive force against home invaders. Forty-five states do not require citizens to abandon their homes and flee from intruders. Let's send a clear message to the criminal elements of our island that our homes are our castles, and our castles will be defended. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I have Senator McCready and then Senator Uggan and Senator Yamashita.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank the author, Senator Ada, for not only introducing this type of legislation but including me as a co-sponsor. And I also like to thank the fellow co-sponsors, Senator Uggan and Senator Esposito. You know, when he, when this bill was initially introduced, and I was a co-sponsor, I got a lot of phone calls, and when I see people out in public, until today, the first thing on their minds are, "How is that castle doctrine bill going and is it going to be passed?" And all you have to look at, and you don't have to look for, you know, people say, "The best time to introduce a bill like this is 10 years ago and the second best time would be today." Well, we have these crimes occurring in not just homes, but in businesses as well. We just saw on TV a couple, a couple days ago, I believe, in the newspaper, how this gentleman, I don't even know if you want to call him gentleman, but how this person robbed the store and fired his gun at the cashier. Now, all you have to do is put yourself in that position, put your daughter, your son. And this bill is a common sense bill. I do believe that we should, we should be allowed to protect our loved ones, who is our most vulnerable, women and children. I do believe we should fight this type of crime or any type of crime of this nature with punishment. Right now, the criminals think that they can get away with anything, and that's why they're doing this. And it was said in a, in a public hearing, the reason why criminals offend is because they don't think they're going to get caught. Well, this bill right here Well, this bill right here, when they do get caught, they'll have to pay the price. So I'm in full support of this legislation, and just, just by looking at the history of landscape of the Thirty-Second Guam Legislature, and I'm sure many before, but the Thirty-Second Guam Legislature, they have been tough on crime, they have been extra tough on the language and specifying penalties for criminals, and I think this is just another piece of legislation that goes along those lines. So once again, I thank Senator Ada and all the co-sponsors, and I ask that, that we, we as a body protect our citizens with something, with a bill as well as this one. So thank you, and I urge my colleagues to support this bill as well.
Thank you very much, Senator McCready. On the motion, Senator Uggan, you recognize.
Buenos dias, Madam Speaker, and to our fellow colleagues, good morning, everyone. You know, Madam Speaker, having had the opportunity to be able to chair the committee that heard this particular legislation, one of the perspectives that I had always thought about is, you know, being tougher on crime is okay, but enacting as many tougher laws that we have in this body in the first ten months, inclusive of considering this proposal, really reflects the times. And I look at this, and a lot of the comments that were provided during the course of the public hearing were not only endorsing it, but they were sharing a real concern about our community, that now we have many instances where people, just between their office, work site, and their vehicle, they are somewhat concerned whether in fact they can get there safely, and I say perhaps after five P.M. or after work. I know that when that incident occurred at the Payless Market, Madam Speaker, where two individuals were retiring from work, and they were heading into the parking lot, and unfortunately, they were burglarized. Shortly after that, I had come across a few individuals, and they said, right now, they just don't feel safe. So we look at enacting laws like this, which would empower the homeowners, and in some cases, the business owners, in terms of keeping their homes or their businesses safe. It's a movement in the right direction. But I also look at it, Madam Speaker, as an underlying concern in our island and in our community. We all in this room received not too long ago, from a teacher who has been in the system, I believe, in excess of the Department of Education, in excess of fifteen years, who had shared a concern about some of the mistreatment that she so far in the classroom has had to endure. And one of her suggestions is, perhaps we need to move in a direction of creating and establishing a teachers' rights legislation, to identify and to reinforce that the teachers have a right to working in a safe environment. That's where we are right now, Madam Speaker. And whether it's getting more police officers in the streets, which is certainly a big part of the equation, whether it's providing tougher laws such as this, I know that Public Law twenty, thirty-two dash three was one of the first legislation that was enacted by this body, which made it tougher for criminals who are identified and who go through the system. The three strikes and you're out legislation that was enacted by just the previous speaker, or sponsored by the previous speaker and passed by this body and enacted into law, provide for three strikes and you're out, and you will remain incarcerated for the balance of your life. These are tougher legislation, but we need to bring it home, Madam Speaker. We need to find a way to understand exactly how we can approach this as a community, because getting more police officers in the streets, reinforcing our law enforcement officials, is a wonderful part of the equation. Passing tougher laws is another very critical part of the equation. Having neighborhood watch programs implemented and established as recent as the one in Barigata certainly speaks a lot about homeowners and neighborhoods wanting to ensure the safety of our island community. So I just wanted to leave with that message, Madam Speaker. Not only do I stand in full support of this legislation, because it would empower homeowners, and it would also empower businesses, business owners, to be able to continue to ensure safety within their homes and within their establishments, but just as importantly, it would empower the entire island community and send a message to these criminals that you have absolutely no business doing or conducting any of your activities here on island. Being tougher on crime, putting more police officers out in the streets is critical, but we also need to encourage our community to continue to take ownership in our island. This is paradise. This is our home. We need to continue to take ownership, and it's passing laws like this, working and partnering with the AG's Office, with Judiciary of Guam, with all the law enforcement, and then also being able to address some of these other concerns that arise as a result of our situation out there. So I encourage the, our colleagues, Madam Speaker, to not only support this legislation, to reinforce the requirement for this. I thank the good sponsor for allowing me to be able to be co-sponsor of this measure, but to the people of Guam and those who provided testimony that evening, we hear your concerns, and this legislation is one of that particular solution to the overall scenario, and I certainly hope that our community, it would result in discouraging and minimizing any criminal activity out there, especially as it relates to our homes and the business owners, and most importantly, ensuring that our island remains safe. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Yamashita, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me the opportunity to speak in full support of Bill Number one forty-six. Madam Speaker, as you are well aware, last week for two days, we represented you in the Guam Coalition for Sexual Assault and Family Violence. Madam Speaker, for two days, Senator Tina Rose Munoz Barnes and myself sat and listened to a hundred and fifty people talk, discuss, deliberate, pray, cry, and reflect about where our island is right now, and we're not in a very good place. Socially, emotionally, our families are in need of help. One of the sessions that kicked off the two days, Madam Speaker, was a review of all the laws that are in place, and Senator Tina took the crowd through where it all started. I think it was in the Fifteenth Guam Legislature where we had our first legislation that talked about family violence and criminal sexual assault. And throughout it, many of the people in the audience weren't aware of all of the laws, but they certainly said we do need strong, relevant, and meaningful laws, where penalties spoke to the crimes being committed. And as we talked about how we're not safe being in our own homes, we know about the Nimitz Hill incident, we know about just yesterday, I believe somebody was sentenced or found guilty, maybe spending ninety years of the rest of his life in jail for being at the Micronidian Mall and throwing the lady into the car and driving her off. This kind of legislation sends the message to those who are miswired, who need help, who just weren't brought up right, that you do something like this, you shall pay, you shall pay for your crimes. And so, once the word gets out that you cannot do this, then hopefully others will think twice about creating or committing such hideous crimes. But Madam Speaker, as the previous speaker also alluded to, there are other aspects that we really need to address, and the two days with the women and the men, we had, we had several men at the Coalition Summit, talked about the need to really address parenting on our island. We really need to energize early childhood education, we need to give support to our parents in knowing how to be a good parent of today, and we talked about how being a good parent of today is really hard, challenging, but I really suggest that being a good kid of today is even more challenging. We talked about the need for restorative justice, that we have seven hundred people in our Department of Corrections at Manila, two hundred of those people are serving a sentence, and five hundred of them are waiting for their crime to be heard. And just yesterday, we had a very good meeting with the DOC Director and his assistants in talking about restorative justice, and how we really should be building up their skills so that when they get out of jail, they can be doing good things instead of going back to prison. At the top of the list, though, Madam Speaker, you won't be surprised at this, the people in the audience really talked about the need for cultural sensitivity across our island. The people in the room were social workers. The people in the room were all the nonprofit first-liners. The people in the room are all of those who are connected with in the, at the middle of the night, whom the families are saying, "Help us. We're abused, we're beaten up, we have nowhere to go." And at the top of their list, they said, "We have a need on our island to help everybody understand how to respect and hold in high regard for everybody, no matter where we come from, no matter our age, no matter if we can speak or not speak, no matter if we have a home or we don't have a home." And Madam Speaker, Adult Protective Services was there, and just this year alone, we've had two hundred and sixty-seven of our manomko being abused. So we have a serious issue in that regard as well. Madam Speaker, the room talked about the need to outreach, to go into the villages and to talk about programs, supports, and services that are available, and to help people stop. As you know, every two weeks, one of us kills ourselves, and at the top of the list of the homeless and those who's killing ourselves are the tremorals. So we have a real need to really reach out, leverage our resources, and get the support system out there to help people know how to be respectful, to know how, to motivate them to get a job, to work, to stay in school, to study, to be a good person. And a part of the puzzle, sad to say, is that we do need Castle Doctrine Act. A part of the puzzle is sad to say that Guam has come to a point where this kind of penalty is needed. Sad to say that Guam has come to a point where we all lock our doors, and I'm sure many moms are like me. I walk the house five thousand times a night to make sure that door is locked, to make sure all three doors are locked, to make sure that the windows are shut. We've gotten to a point, but that's how we live. And that's a sad statement, but it is our reality, and so this kind of penalty in line, maybe it'll help us, or it will help us, but we need to look at all those other puzzle pieces to ensure that every single person on our island is safe, that every visitor who comes is safe, that everybody who, who comes to Guam and wants to be a part of Guam feels safe here. We need to heighten those, those safety issues, the safety constraints. So Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill Number one forty-six. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Mr. Vice Speaker, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as, as someone who has personally been affected by crime, I fully understand the need to feel safe in our community. And I fully understand the concerns that many in the community have about wanting to address the rising crime, criminal activity that's occurring in this community. But I really do have my concerns, and I am apprehensive, that this four-page, five-page legislation is the answer. As the retiring speaker mentioned, you had organized, and she had represented you at a conference last week where a hundred and fifty people were there, and these hundred and fifty people that were there were, were not the uninformed in the community, or at least not the ones that one would think would be uninformed, but as the retiring speaker mentioned, many of these people were not aware of the legislation that had passed, or had been passed by this legislature in the last twenty or thirty years. I really have concerns about the way that this bill is written, because though I under, it really is oblique. I had just spoken to the sponsor of the legislation and asked whether or not he had misspoken, because when I read the committee report, Mr. Lee Weber had asked about making it, amending the proposed statute to include business, small businesses. And in his opening statement, the sponsor mentioned that it would make, that this bill was addressing it, and I asked whether he had misspoken, because I couldn't figure out where it was here. And he pointed out that they had amended, or we're referring to habitable property, that they had changed the definition on page four from dwelling to habitable property, and habitable property was the meaning in thirty-four-ten that includes any such property, whether or not a person is or actually present there. And when I pulled up thirty-four-ten, habitable property means a structure, vehicle, or vessel adapted for accommodation or occupation by persons. Again, that is just a little bit too oblique for me. It's just not clear. The other problem that I have is, on page two, on the presumption to have held reasonable fear on B, it says, "A person who uses defensive force knew or had reason to believe that an unlawful or forcible entry or unlawful or forcible act was occurring or had occurred." Just within the last four months, I think I might have shared the email with a few of you of a story in Texas where a judge dismissed the complaint against a man who shot a woman who had come to his hotel room. And the judge accepted his castle defense theory because he was protecting himself against prostitution, the commission of prostitution. I'm sure you remember that email, because I think it was only the female senators that I sent it to, because I was a little concerned about this. And it was just this last weekend, or this last week, here on Guam, where a hotel occupant alleged that his two people had forcibly entered his room and stolen his wallet and his belongings and ran out. And the reason why it got play on the, on the news was the fact that he, well, the police caught the tube, and one of them was transvestite. They were invited into his room, I mean, he claims they broke in. They probably invited them into his room, and they stole his stuff. That's a habitable property. Would he have reason like that man in Texas to shoot them? I have many questions about this piece of legislation, and as the retiring speaker mentioned about the fact that the hundred and fifty people at the conference weren't aware of many of the laws that we had passed in previous legislatures, and ignorance is no defense. I really do think that this should also include a provision, and I want to thank some of the people that came and testified, who made mention of the fact that it's imperative that there be an educational process about what can and is going to be acceptable and presumed to be defensive. It's not clear. As a result of that, it not being clear, Madam Speaker, I really have concerns that this may have grave unintended consequences and cannot in good conscience support it, though I understand the need for us to want to protect ourselves. And I fully understand it, Madam Speaker. I mean, I'd lie in bed sometimes at night and I hear a noise and in my mind, I go through my whole defense of the House. And how I'm going to throw the intruder down the stairs and before the police get there, crack every bone in their body. Knowing full well that I probably won't, I've never struck a human being in my entire But I'm concerned that there may be people that are going to be harmed, some grievously As a result of this, of the violence. And how much of this violence are we supposed to accept? Is it, should the manomko that are being abused by their children have the right to I don't know, Madam Speaker. There are too many questions with this piece of legislation, and I unfortunately cannot in good conscience support it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Vice Speaker, on the motion, I have Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, when the bill was first introduced, I thought, well, it's about time that we have legislation such as this. Then as I was reading through the bill, I too have a lot of concerns specifically with the language of the bill. So I will go straight to the concerns that I have. On page two, sub-paragraph 1A, starting at line 13, it talks about how a, well, that a person is pursued, presumed to have held a reasonable fear of imminent peril of death or serious bodily injury to himself or herself, or another when using defensive force that is intended or likely to cause death or serious bodily injury to another, if there's a person against whom this defensive force was used was in the process of unlawfully and forcefully entering. So that's one circumstance that then this defensive force can be used. And so if I see a guy, the moment that he, I see him starting to push up on my window to get in, then it appears that then this castle doctrine kicks in, and now I have the right to shoot that guy before he even gets in my, in my house. So if he's in the process of entering my home, then the castle doctrine kicks in. The other circumstance is when that, that intruder has unlawfully or forcefully entered into my private space, then castle doctrine kicks in. I can go ahead and, and take a shot at him without being subject to criminal or civil So that's, that's the current, first concern that I have is, you know, what point does this castle doctrine come into play? When I see the guy outside my window starting to pry it open, or once he has gotten in? I'll be standing right there in the room. Once he sticks his foot in and his body is in, he's going to get it. Or can I just get it to him when he's at my window, trying to force his way in? So I think that's going to need some clarification. The other concern that I have is as you go down there, we talk about then that you can use defensive force against an individual who is in the process of forcefully entering in, or has entered in, who has entered in a habitable property, comma, residence, or, comma, or occupied vehicle. So if I catch this guy in one of the three places, then castle doctrine kicks in. If he's in my residence, in my home, but then, and that's, that's fine. I mean, I've always thought castle, my home, you're in my home, you're, this is the last place that you're, that you're going to violate anything that's near and dear to me. But I have concern about, we talk about habitable property, and I'm just not sure, although there's a definition in the later pages as to what habitable property is, has the meaning provided in 3410, includes any such property, whether or not a person is present therein. But the concern that I have is when we say habitable property, so if I have my front yard fenced off, is my front yard habitable property? Because you know, on occasions, I will take the kids out there and we'll set up our tent and, and we'll, we'll, that's going to be our urban camping out. So is my front yard now habitable property? And the moment that he steps into my front yard, castle doctrine kicks in. As I read it, that's, that's how I would read that. And, or occupied vehicle. So I'm driving down Cliff Line Road here, and I'm at a stop sign, and some drunk tries to break into my car, and I just happen to have my Magnum 357 sitting on my front seat. He's trying to break in, he finally punches in and he grabs me by the neck, I'm going to go ahead and let him have it. Not at my residence, but anywhere because I'm in my car. Does then castle doctrine kick in? It's not clear. But the way I read this is that as long as in my vehicle, and it doesn't say where I'm, where I have to be, as long as in my, I'm in my vehicle, castle doctrine will kick in. Now, of course, as we go further down on line 26, it kind of causes me further confusion because up here on line 15, we talk about the three locations, a habitable property, a residence, or occupied vehicle. We go down to line 26, and it talks about habitable property residence or vehicle. So what are we talking about? Does habitable property residence then exclude my front yard? And he, it's only, castle doctrine only applies when he, when he breaks into my house? I don't know. I think that needs clarification. Then on page three, I have a concern about, I guess, the castle doctrine as I, as I, as I read it here, will not apply if the person or persons, in the case of, see, I guess, the person against whom the defensive force is used has a right to be in or is a lawful residence. So, so let's go back to page two, down there in line 25. So I, I read that and I, I then say, well, then I guess what that means then is if, is if I come home drunk one night and I really, I'm, I'm, I, my wife is fearing for her safety because I'm so, because the, you know, the husband is so drunk, I guess this castle doctrine does not apply in that case because the husband has just as much right to be in that residence. I think that needs to be clarified. But probably my biggest concern is that the castle doctrine does not apply if, in this case, I guess, the person against whom the defensive force is, that I want to shoot is a person who, and again, I'm trying to, the person breaks in forcefully enters in order to remove a child, grandchild, or otherwise a person that's under the lawful custody of the person against whom the defensive force is used. Now, I read that and I interpret that to mean that, you know, the, the, the grandchildren are, you know, grandma is watching the grandkids and, and their father comes home and stinking drunk, and I let him in to, to take his children and I, and after that, after he lets him in, he realized, the grandfather realizes that this guy is in no shape to take these grandkids out and tells them to leave. And then the father of the drunken father, you know, becomes threatening. If the grandfather decides to shoot that guy, the way I read this is that castle doctrine does not apply. No, so I'm reading this, I'm going to be the layman, who after this bill is passed, I'm going to read this and say, okay, if the father, if the grand, you know, I'm going to look at it to use as a guideline and, and I have a feeling my interpretation is going to be wrong. Then we go down to line 21 on page three, and, and again, I've, I've always thought the castle doctrine was, that, you know, it applies to that one place where I live, where I go to bed at night and go to sleep and keep all my treasured belongings, and that's where it would apply. But according to this, it would apply, actually, if you look at page four, how residence is defined, it could mean a place where I am visiting as an invited guest. So if for some reason, I have a concealed weapon permit and I carry around this pistol and I'm visiting a friend, and if I feel threatened there, according to this, castle doctrine kicks in. So, so it's really not just that this, our, you know, our humble abode that we go to sleep in at night, it could be anywhere. It could be at a friend's place where I've been invited to, and some drunk comes in, I protect it by the castle doctrine. And finally, going back to page three, I'm concerned about the fact that on line 21 there, paragraph three, it says, "A person who is not engaged in any lawful activity and who is attacked in any other place where he or she has a right to be, has no duty to retreat." I don't know that that's, that's right. It's kind of like, I got a gun right here under my shirt, I'm carrying it lawfully, I'm down at a, I guess I have a right to be at any public place, down at the farmer's market, and some drunk comes up to me and, you know, starts being threatening, I'm going to stand my ground according to this because I don't have a duty to retreat. Whereas really, I think it's incumbent upon us to do as much as we can also to, you know, to just find this guy is not thinking right, you know, might as well walk away from it. Then of course, if he follows, if he was to follow me and still, you know, trying to cause harm, then at that time, I've, you know, I've tried to retreat, leaves me no choice. But according to the bill, I can, at that place where I'm at, where I have a right to be at the Chamorro Village, let him have it. Castle doctrine will protect me from that. But I'm just concerned about how we're saying, don't worry, castle doctrine, now you don't have a duty to retreat. But I think we also have a duty to kind of, you know, not, not add fuel to the fire. Walk away from it, and, and if he continues to insist and engaging, then at that time, he leaves you no choice. But this is really quite, this castle doctrine is not just at our, my, my place where I go to sleep at night and secure my family. It could be anywhere. Anywhere that I'm, that I am in my car, or anywhere where I have the right to, where I, I have a right to be. And so I too have a concern that, you know, this is basically, that the castle doctrine would apply anywhere that, that, that we are being threatened at. And I think we do need something like the castle doctrine. I certainly would, would, would support it. But I do have concerns about, you know, just really defining, better defining where and when this castle doctrine will, will kick in. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Ada. On the motion, I recognize Senator Mike Senikels.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I love the intent of this bill. If anyone tries to enter into my home and cause harm to my family, they will be met with deadly force, bill or no bill. I will protect my family at all costs, and I'll go through whatever judicial proceedings I'll need to go through in order to justify the actions that were taken to secure my home and to secure my family. This bill intends to address that in the form of law, and I believe that the intent is very good, but there are concerns that I too share. We heard a lot of hypotheticals from some of our previous speakers. I'd like to talk about some actuals, some real occurrences that would make this bill very, very, something, something to think twice about. Not too long ago, Madam Speaker, we had one of our own staff here at the legislature, one of our guys, get hit over the head while trying to remove a homeless person who was sleeping in the back side of the building. And by definition of this bill, in reference to the definition of habitable property, technically that homeless person was in a habitable property, and the removal of that homeless person would have justified that homeless person's response to hit our guy over the head with the pipe. If he had killed our guy, if this was law, he would have been immune from criminal or civil action. So we need to be very, very careful about what we're defining here as allowable places to exercise the use of force or deadly force. Habitable property, as defined in section 3410 that the, this bill references, states only, habitable property means any structure, vehicle, or vessel adapted for the accommodation or occupation of persons. So really, anywhere that anybody is sleeping could technically become a habitable property. It has, it doesn't have any specification as to actual ownership. So if somebody's sleeping in my front porch and I try to remove them, they're sleeping in habitable property, it's my property, but then they can use deadly force on me because they feel that they're being threatened because I'm trying to remove them? It's just very questionable, Madam Speaker. I think the definition needs to be tightened up a great deal in order to make sure that the true intent is being accomplished. My other concern, Madam Speaker, as was shared earlier on page three, spoken very well by the retiring speaker, was that this law applies to any area that you are lawfully able to be at. If you are attacked in any place that you have a right to be, you have no duty to retreat, and you have the right to stand your ground, meet force with force, including deadly force, to prevent death or serious bodily injury. And we talked about hypotheticals earlier, I'd like to talk about actuals. Because this bill references a person, not an adult, but a person. And so a student who is at a high school, who gets into a fight by virtue of this law, has every right to fight, meet force with force, and kill the kid who attacked him, and he will be immune from criminal and civil action. I don't believe that that's what the intent of this bill is, but the realities as it applies to the way the language is written is such- but the realities as it applies to the way the language is written is such that if there is a fight in a high school, the students have every right to fight, they have every right to kill each other, and nobody can take any action on them. We know that fights happen perhaps on a daily basis in our schools, Madam Speaker, it's sad to say. But what would be even sadder is if this bill is going to green light that and take away any kind of possible penalties that may be placed upon the offenders as a result. And that takes me to my last concern, Madam Speaker, which is in fact the immunity from criminal and civil action. Page five, lines four through six. "A person who uses force is immune from criminal prosecution and civil action for the use of such force, and the only exception is if it's used against a law enforcement officer who's in the, in the, in the normal course of business, basically." And I think that we need to be a little bit more clear on when the use of force will in fact be immune from criminal and civil action because, really, that's why we have our court systems. Violence is a terrible thing. Whether it's self-defense or not, it's a terrible thing, and everyone should have the right to defend themselves. But in the end, that action needs to be adjudicated. And what this bill would do is it would remove the adjudication process entirely by creating blanket immunity for those who are defending themselves. And the greater concern that I have was on line 16 or 19, when it says, "A law enforcement agency may use standard procedures for investigating the use of force." If I was to, I will proffer the amendment at this time, Madam Speaker, I'd like to amend "may" to "shall." At the very least, every single occurrence should be investigated as to whether or not that use of force was justified. So I'll go ahead and pause at this point in time, Madam Speaker, and proffer the amendment. Page five, line 16, change the word "may" to "shall."
On the amendment, are there any objections? On this order. You may continue, Senator.
Well, that amendment, Madam Speaker, does really tighten up a great deal for me because at the very least, we're gonna make sure that if there is in fact an action that was as a result of this law, it would be investigated. But I really, overall, I believe that the bill is a good bill. I believe that everybody should be able to defend their homes, defend their loved ones, defend themselves, and do so in a manner that is adequate in order to make sure that they're safe. But I just don't want this to be opening up too many question marks and to creating immunities when we're, when we still have a lot of uncertainties as to exactly how the law will be interpreted and how the law will be applied. Madam Speaker, if I may request a brief recess to confer with the author.
We're going to take a brief recess. The legislature's back in session, and Senators Nicholas had asked for a brief recess. So Senator, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. In light of some of the concerns that I brought up, I was going to perhaps make a motion to refer the bill back to committee. However, the author would like some time to continue working on the bill throughout the duration of the session. So if I may be obliged to go ahead and conclude my discussion, but perhaps be given the opportunity to make the motion to refer it back to committee in the event that we aren't able to address the changes adequately on the floor.
Well, the author had asked that we allow for any others who would like to speak on the motion, and then we can make that decision after everyone has been given an opportunity.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, and by then, I should be able to recognize you. So, I have on the list, Speaker Pangolinan, who would like to speak on the motion.
Thank you very much, and Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank all the members of this body who have spoken on the bill so far, both that support the bill and both, of course, that are voicing concern about it. I think that for me, it certainly has continued to enlighten me as I continue to look at the bill and grapple with, what are we trying to do? And why are we doing this? You know, Madam Speaker, it's a very sensitive issue, of course, safety. Safety for oneself, safety for one's family, most especially, of course, being we're such a family-oriented island. And then the respect for the individual, which all comes into our culture, and when that respect is breached, then the community falls apart. And so we ask ourselves, I certainly asked myself, what kind of safety are we looking for in our community? Are we looking for now to isolate safety and just put pods? So that we all cocoon ourselves in this safety pods? And as long as we're okay, the rest of the community can, you know, kinda like air conditioning of what it has done. It has cocooned ourselves in our homes because it's too hot to be outside. We don't want to open our windows because we don't want to talk to our neighbors, because the cold air goes out and our power bill goes up. So what do we do? We end up not talking to our neighbors. We end up losing that sense of community. And I really think that what this bill does is rather from looking at our sense of community, our sense of family, we're no longer doing that as a community. We're just doing that as individual pods. And as long as I'm good, and I have the right and the authority to continue to be good in my own home, then the rest of the island can go to pot because I'm cocooned, I'm safe. But are you really safe? Are you safe? And is that all that safety means to you, is that you isolate yourself from the rest of our island? And I think that this bill kinda moves us in that direction versus the other direction, where we take care of each other, we look at issues that affect our entire community, our entire spectrum of living here on Guam, and we try to make all of those things better so that we don't need to cocoon ourselves. That the cocoon of safety and community is the entire island of Guam, and not my car, not my house, not my place of business, and so forth. Madam Speaker, again, what are we trying to solve? What problem has come about that says, ma'am, we need to allow people to shoot people? You know? Because when you take a look at our existing statute, Madam Speaker, in 7.61, when can you use force? When can you use what we're trying to do here, and so forth? And right now, without a Castle Doctrine, a person can use force in order to avoid death or great bodily harm to himself or another in a circumstance where a person of reasonable firmness in his situation would not have done otherwise. So we have in statute saying, I can use force, deadly force for that matter, when I want to avoid death or great body injury. Bodily injury, that's exactly what this, the bill does here. It says, to avoid or to prevent great, actually, I think we use the different word now, we're not using great body, just serious bodily injury. Existing law that already allows us to use force. And it doesn't even say it's just in our home or in our house. So in that respect, do we need this addition to our statute? Then you go to 7.84, self-defense. When is it allowed? Allow the use of force upon or towards another person is justifiable when the defendant believes that such force is immediately necessary for the purpose of protecting himself against the use of unlawful force by such other person on the present occasion. So I'm now allowed to use force upon another person to, you know, and justify it when I believe, I believe that such force is immediately necessary for the purpose of protecting myself. So why, why do we need this Castle Doctrine? Again, it is, you know, an expansion? do we need this castle doctrine? Again, it is, you know, an expansion? I think that, and Madam Speaker, we're saying, oh, we want to prevent prosecution. Well, with these statutes, I just, I really, you know, have not, can't recall somebody being prosecuted for, you know, plead, after pleading self-defense because somebody entered their house or that person believed that they were, you know, under grave, great body injury, injury threat in a present occasion. I just, you know, I can't, I can't recall. So do we have a problem in which we need to expand this castle doctrine and allow, you know, the use of a gun to defend yourself? It doesn't limit the use of force to just the gun. Hey, you know, somebody was saying, hey, I want to be able to use, you know, a brass lamp to hit him over the head in the testimony. Well, yeah, you can under hit this one too, you know, a little bit more upscale, maybe a gold lamp. But, you know, because that's your castle. Your castle is gold. But is that, is it necessary to do this, given what we have in our current statute, given the pattern of practice that our law enforcement officials have made a determination under this prosecutorial, you know, authority to be discriminatory in terms of how you charge offenses? Do we see a pattern of abuse of people who are defending their family, their home, their possessions? You know, it's to, in order to defend themselves? And do we see a pattern where people are being hauled into court and being charged? I don't see it at all. So there's, in my opinion, not a need to do that, Madam Speaker. And do we really have, and when we look at the empirical evidence, have castle doctrine laws or castle doctrine statutes resulted in a reduction in crime for home invasion for, and things like that? You know, the, this is not a debate that is confined to our community at all. This is a debate that is ongoing in every community across the country. But when you take a look at the crime statistics and in the arguments that are cited, we don't see a reduction in the crime that we believe this is going to prevent. Because we also want to prevent individuals from suffering, you know, prosecution when they are defending themselves. But we also want to ensure that people aren't suffering from crime itself, period. And in the statistics, Eric Holder, the Attorney General of the United States, and when you look at the George Martin, I mean, George Zimmerman, Trevor Martin case, huge debate across the community, you know, stayed glued and reading everything that came about there. That was even, not even in a castle. That was just out on the street, you know? But we saw that that type of defense or allowing that type of activity to occur has not reduced crime at all, has not made our streets safer, nor our homes. Is that the solution? Is this the solution? If this is the solution, then I say we just like, you know, put gun use curriculum in the schools and teach our children from, say, age six to start shooting. If we believe that arming everyone in our community is the solution to crime, then I say we integrate it into our educational system and we have firing range instead of swing sets in our, you know, in our schools. If, if that is the solution to crime is arming everyone and allowing everyone to shoot everyone else on the belief that they are under serious body injury threat, I just don't think that the debate, I mean, it's clear. To the person who believes he's safer with a gun in the house, he's going to be safer. But as a community, is that the case? As a, as, as, as others, are the others just as safe? You know what I mean? And we're not. That's not the solution to, to safety and crime in our communities. It may be a portion of the solution, you know, for those that take the proper time, energy to train themselves. I mean, shooting a gun is hard, period. Shooting at a can, it's not that easy. Shooting a human being is even. I can never imagine it. I could not imagine it, you know? And I don't want anybody, no matter how well-trained they are, to be put in that type of situation to defend themselves, you know? And so maybe the solution lies a little bit differently. And I believe that the way that this bill is, given to what we currently have in our statutes, it doesn't add anything, except I believe it adds greater opportunity for grief and sorrow. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Speaker Panglinen. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Senator Ada, I know that you wanted everyone to speak on the issue.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, with the input of my colleagues, and I appreciate the previous speaker's words of wisdom and his testimony to the bill. You know, today's society is really different. You know, before, even when I was just a teenager, even a little boy, we used to just have a screen door in the house where we go in and leave the house anytime we pleased. We didn't need to lock our doors. We had louvers. Leave our louvers open. As long as the screen was there to keep the mosquitoes out, we were okay. There was a time when we can roll down in our cars and have our windows down and everything's fine. Society has changed and our island has changed with that society. It's no longer, our island is no longer that place where we can leave our screen doors in the front of the house. We can no longer roll down the street with the windows down or even the doors unlocked. You know, just recently, one of our, our former colleagues, his daughter had an incident where someone was trying to force their way into her vehicle. What, can you imagine what would have happened if her window was down or her door was unlocked? It's not saying that we want to cocoon ourselves into our homes or into our cars or into our businesses. What it's saying is that we want to bring our community or our laws up to date with the changes in society. Is this the way we want to live? Absolutely not. You know, we want to live in peace and harmony. But is that what society is? That's not what society is. And I, I agree with the speaker, you know? We need to stay in communication with our community, stay in touch with one another, you know? But those days have far changed. Our island has far changed. I mean, if you look at before, even just 10 years ago, you can go down the street and you can, when a village has a fiesta, you can't even go through that village because traffic was so bad, cars parked along the side of the road. Now, you can drive by and think that there was no fiesta going on because no one is, no one's having any parties or to celebrate. And that's because of the change in society, the change in our community. I understand that we don't want to bring our place to where you're going to say, you know what, well, I want to live with a gun or I want to live with a pot, you know, and whoever enters my house, that's it. But at times, we have to. At times, we have to say, it's them or my family. And if someone comes into your car, someone comes into your home, then that's when that time comes out and says, no, I'm not going to put up with it. No, I'm not going to stand for that. And sometimes, I guess sometimes with us being on this side, we don't understand that because we haven't been through it. A lot of these things have things where, where you have to be a part or had experienced it in order to understand it and sometimes not. But with all that said, Madam Speaker, I'd like to take into consideration what all the, my colleagues have inputted on this bill. And if I may, I'd like to set 146 aside so we can address the issues, so we can move on with the other bills. And when I'm ready, I'd like to bring that back, Madam Speaker.
The motion is then to set aside and to come back to it later. So it will not lose its position without any objections ordered. We're now on Bill number 153-32. I recognize the primary sponsor, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I make the motion to place Bill number 153-32 as amended by the Committee on Education, Public Library and Women's Affairs in the third reading file. And I ask if I may speak on it?
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill number 153-32 is an act relative to the rights of nursing mothers and children relative to breastfeeding, to be known as the Nana Zanputgun Act, to add a new chapter for B Division 1 of Title 19 GCA 10, to amend Section 22107, Division 2, Chapter 22, Title 7 GCA, to add a new section 80.49.1 of Chapter 80, Article 2 of Title 9 GCA, and to add a new section 1036 to Chapter 10 of Title 1 Guam GCA. Madam Speaker, this act is all about women's rights and about family rights and about children's rights. This act actually is in the hills of our Affordable Care Act, our National Affordable Care Act, that amended Section 7 of the Fair Labor Standards Act, which says that our nursing moms, those who are breastfeeding, shall have breaks throughout the day to express their milk. And that place shall not be in the toilet, that that place will be in a clean, private setting. And so when that happened on a national level, our growing families here, and it's, and we know, public health has helped us learn that breastfeeding is becoming more and more present. Perhaps years ago, it was very, that was the way we nursed our children. And then things changed and many of us breastfed and formula-fed our babies. But today, more of our younger mothers are actually breastfeeding and not choosing to use formula. And so when we were approached by a growing, a very young family celebrating their first son, they realized that as they nursed their baby, there were different looks, there were different environments, there were different feelings. And Jen approached us and said, in her research, Guam doesn't have any legislation that gives the mom the right to nurse. And with that, our conversations began. And so what this measure does is really very simple. It says that if you are nursing, that as our labor laws require, that during your break, you may nurse and it shall not be in the toilet, that it will be in a work break room, or it'll be, as public health has taught us, some agencies simply get a real simple curtain and put it in a place and they get a chair and they can sit in there. But it's a place where they feel comfortable, where they can express their milk. One of the first questions that was raised by different community members was, are you saying that the babies are going to come to work? And that's not what we're saying at all. What we are saying, and anybody who has nursed knows that, when you breastfeed, your breasts generate milk and it has to be expressed every two hours or so. That's because usually that's the length of time that a baby needs to eat again. Their tummies are small, so they hold a little milk, a little nutrition, and then the time goes and that is used up and then it's time to eat again. And so, you know, as human beings, our bodies know, and so we, our breasts produce that milk again. And so we express milk. So we're not saying the babies are going to come to work, but we are saying is that mothers shall be able to express their milk and put it in their, and save it in their containers, and then they take it home with them. And we are saying that it will not be in the toilet, but it'll be in a place. And many of our agencies already have areas where they can go and express their milk. We have worked with Department of Labor and they are in full support of this. They understand all the federal rules and regs. We've worked, we've talked with the Department of Corrections. And at the time that we met with the DOC people, we had three young mothers at DOC, but nobody was breastfeeding. And so that really was a non-issue. But they do know that if, unfortunately, if there's a young mother in jail and if they do have a baby, they are ready to create a place where the mother can express her milk and then somebody will pick up the milk so that their babies can drink the breast milk. We've had representation from the chamber who stands in full support of this. And we also know that we certainly aren't going to be telling private businesses how to do their business. But we are asking them to encourage that if a mother is breastfeeding, that she shall be able to do that. We also know that WIC, the Women's Infant Care Program, already has a huge program that talks about the benefits of breastfeeding. And those benefits, we have research that shows that those babies who are breastfed, they seem, they have a lower incidence of ear infections, they have lower rates of diarrhea, they have lower rates of asthma. And we also know that women's health is impacted by, if they breastfeed. They have lower incidence of cancer. And we just saw a study that was published just this week that shows that women who breastfeed have a lower incidence of Alzheimer's. The other part of allowing people, women to breastfeed at work is the notion that many mothers want to go back to work. And so if they are able to go back and continue to express their milk, then there's a tendency to go back. If they find a place where their babies, they find their grandmothers or their godmothers or the neighbor or the sister or the brother who can watch the growing child or a care center, that they would still be able to express their milk and be able to keep that formula going. At the honorable AB International Airport, the leadership up there has said that tourists have given feedback, that they enjoy coming to our island, but they have written comments that said they would like to go to a place where they can breastfeed. Right now, there isn't a place up at our airport where they can do that. And so the leadership up there is very enthusiastic about developing a family room. And people at our tables at the different meetings have said when they travel, they, whether it's Japan or across our nation or anywhere else, there's usually a place where a family can take a break together, where the family can breastfeed. And I know that I've seen many bathrooms where we have a table that we can pull down where we can change a child's diapers. But they're talking about a place where it's just a chair, a comfortable chair, where it's clean, where the children can, we can put our things down and breastfeed and change the diapers in a setting, a comfortable, clean setting. The ladies and the gentlemen, because there were men at these meetings that we've talked with, have also talked about jury duty, Madam Speaker. And so there is a, what we've done is we're tossing it up for conversation, of course, with us here, is that it has been proposed that if you are breastfeeding, and that's the only way your child is getting nourishment, and if you get a doctor or a counselor's note saying that that's what you, that's how you are fully feeding your baby, then you can be excused from jury duty. And we talked a lot about that because many of us have served on jury duty and many of us believe in the importance of that. And I wondered if we really needed to take that step. But then when I thought about our cases and if every two month, every two week, if every two hours I had to be excused to go express my milk, then I could see how if you were doing that, then perhaps that would be a reason to be excused from jury duty. But I do look forward to the conversation on that particular section of the proposal. So, Madam Speaker, this really, the Nana Zanputgun Act is really a way to say that we support healthy beginnings. We support the woman's right to choose to breastfeed. We support a child's health in this regard. We support a woman's decision to return back to work even though she remains, that she is still breastfeeding. And again, the different circles that have come to the table have been in full support. So I look forward to the deliberation and the conversation on the different sections of this act. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Ada, I mean, Agun, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Obviously, the legislature speaks for itself and I thank the sponsor for her comments. But there's a particular section here that deals directly with statistics and general information that I think is always proper to shift. information that I think is always proper to share with our general community. And part of the legislative intent reads on page four. Elisa Ture further finds that breastfeeding protects babies from infections and illnesses that include diarrhea, ear infections, and pneumonia. Breastfed babies are also less likely to develop asthma, and those who are breastfed for six months are less likely to become obese. Nursing mothers also have a decreased risk of breast and ovarian cancers and postpartum depression. It goes on to also read, "A study published in the Journal of Pediatrics estimated that the U.S. would save $13 billion per year in healthcare and other costs if 90% of U.S. babies/Guam babies were exclusively breastfed for six months." Dr. Benjamin also added that by providing accommodations for nursing women, employers would be able to reduce their company's healthcare costs and lower their absenteeism and turnover rates. I think that that's excellent information to ensure that the public understands why this legislation is being proffered. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Senator S. Nicholas, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I too would like to commend the author and co-sponsors of this bill. It's a great bill. It's going to be great for our kids. And I think that something like this is long overdue, and it's a very good thing. We do have a lot of businesses in the private sector that have already taken these steps, and they are to be commended for already understanding the importance of supporting breastfeeding mothers. I would like to proffer an amendment, however, Madam Speaker, on page six, line four. This is in reference to providing unpaid break time. And, you know, for me, and with respect to the retiring speaker and the importance of how breastfeeding is going to help keep a child healthy, a healthy baby is going to help keep a mother at work more often. And I believe that we should consider allowing for break time to be paid rather than unpaid for a mother to be able to go and express milk. I don't want, the idea just doesn't sit well with me that a mother is going to be thinking about not breastfeeding because she's going to have to time out for 15 minutes, and she's going to take a cut in pay because she's getting milk for her baby. So I would like, at this time, to propose an amendment on page six, line four, to change the word unpaid to paid, so that breastfeeding mothers who need to take a break during working hours shall be guaranteed to continue being paid for that period. Because the reality is that it will be more than offset to the benefit of the business for the mother to be expressing breast milk for her child, and for that child to be consuming breast milk, because it will result in a healthier baby, which will thereafter result in a mother taking less time off of work, having to tend to a sick child. So I would like to put that forward to the body to consider an amendment to change unpaid to paid. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Mike, what page is that on, again?
Page six, line four, Madam Speaker.
From unpaid to paid, to delete the letters UN, right? On that motion? Are there any objections? Anyone wanting to speak? If not, motion carries. Senator S. Nicholas, you still have the floor. Ben Povetso, Senator S. Nicholas, next to speak on the main motion. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized, and then Speaker Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I mean, this is a no-brainer bill in the sense that since the time of civilization, that was the means, of course, in which mothers have actually fed their babies. And without, of course, their mothers, then they wouldn't have been able to survive. Today, yes, I realize that it is a modern form of society, again, with change through time. And mothers have become busy, have become primary bread earners for families, and would have to work, and makes it, you know, much more difficult for them to be able to continue to breastfeed, and hence, of course, the creation of formula milks. At the time that, you know, I was pregnant as well, and looked into the possibility of nursing, you know, my children, my child, my firstborn, did a lot of research on it, and primarily because one of the things that I was concerned about would be the health of my children in the future. I was a very sickly child, and although, and this is my understanding, that, you know, I was breastfed, but not for a long period of time, where I would have been able to benefit from being nursed. And as a result of that, then, knowing that, I decided that I didn't want that for my child, you know, my firstborn and the other two that followed after. One of the things in the research that I found that was very critical is that on the initial breastfeeding, of course, when you first start, is that the mother is able, then, to produce and transfer to the child a specific, I don't know what I'm going to call it, but it's colostrum, in which then has not been replicated by any formula milk that, you know, been created to be able to use to feed our children. And those are the first, most important antibodies to be able to help the infant. And because of that one information, that was actually the final decision for me to nurse. The problem, however, and although I was working at the time, is that none of the areas in which I had worked in hadn't a place for me to be able to, you know, to pump, you know, milk, express milk to, so that I can have it bottled and freeze it until I'm able to take it to the sitter, or to even take it home. And I thought about, as a school principal, I thought about, you know, the teacher's lounge, the privacy of my office, but, you know, the only place I had was the restroom. And, you know, restrooms, of course, it's just not the most sanitary place, of course, to be able to do that. If there wasn't adjoining room, maybe it would have been fine. So, and I think as a result of that, as a community, when we don't value nursing our children, and then society, of course, people who would look at us wherever we're at, at the restaurant, or a mall, that they'll give us this strange look. And then, of course, there is that feeling that you are, you'll be embarrassed to do this. And sometimes people have actually would say, you know, you should take that, you know, and do it privately, and you should not be exposed, exposing an area which they thought should not be exposed in the, in an open area. So I think that was a contributory factor in which women then started to stay away from nursing. And it's not an easy thing, trust me, because, I mean, and it's not a convenient thing as well. Because I remember, for a whole year, I literally had to make sure that I was dressed always with a button-up blouse, so that then it'll make it easier for me then to, you know, express milk or to feed my child. And now we have this beautiful, of course, covers now that are being provided in all kinds of colors, so it makes it, again, a lot easier. So the thing is, is that I think we need to be, sometimes, we need to sometimes go back to the old ways, because there's a lot of things that are really good in the old days. And the most important thing to me, like I said, was for the health of my child. And sure enough, I mean, I think every mother would like to be able to have a private place, a clean place, a sanitary place, and in a way where she can sit and relax and be able to express milk. And it's not that easy either to express milk when you are under pressure, when you're having people looking, you know, at you. Because, and this is not just at the workplace. So if I'm at a restaurant, I have to take my child outside to my car to nurse. And it's a problem, because my doctors told me is that basically wherever I go, my child can go, because actually I'm the bottle, you know? I feed the child. So wherever I went, my child or my children went with me. So that means, and wherever that is, whether it's public or private, then I know that that's true. Every, and as inconvenient as it is for a lot of mothers, is yes, every two hours, we have to nurse, because they're tiny babies, and they take only so little. I mean, because if you ever tried expressing milk, you can't even express sometimes an ounce. That's how little they are able, you know, the babies are able to get at a time. And just think with us, as adults, or even other toddlers, how much they consume versus an infant. So I really support this bill. I think it's really important. I think it's time. I've been traveling throughout the region as the president of the Association of Pacific Island Legislatures, and I have to admit, you know, I see campaigns there really supporting breastfeeding. I mean, big signs out there, and it's so natural, it just seems so natural when you go to the islands. But somehow, because we are so westernized already, that we've forgotten what it's like, and we've lost, you know, that sense of connection that we have with our children. And to me, as a mother, there's nothing greater, let me tell you, than that feeling when you're nursing your child, the bond that a mother has with a child. And especially very early on, where you're, that child's whole, to me, their physical well-being, their emotional well-being, you know, starts there. I've, no words that could explain the joy and the bond of having to have breastfed my three children. And I'm not talking about three months, six months, but actually, you know, full year and so on. So with this, Madam Speaker, I really hope all of our colleagues support this, and I hope we continue to promote this. And I hope that, and the questions I've asked of public health as part of the WIC program, is that if there are monies available to do an island-wide campaign, so we can, again, you know, share this information with a lot of our younger mothers. Because I know sometimes it seems like it's the end thing with the different types of formulas and all that, but the best, of course, is always, you know, for children would be breast milk. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Madam Speaker. Speaker Ben Pangolinan, you have the floor on the main motion now.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the legislation, and I also want to echo the concerns raised by Senator Michael S. Nicholas and the resolution that he proposed by the amendment. But I think that once we made that amendment, we have to go to continue to the rest of that section on page six, starting from subsection A, and then taking a look at, since we're now requiring the employer to provide the break time each day, but on the last part of the sentence, an employer is not required to provide that break time. If to do so would unduly disrupt the operations of the employer. And I understand the need to accommodate and work with the employers, Madam Speaker, but I think I also understand the reasonableness and rational approach that employers and employees are going to take on this issue. And so if we're requiring them to provide the leave, then I think we should require them to provide the time as well. I mean, I don't know how long it takes to express milk, you know, for one feeding, but it can't be more than fif, you know, 15 to 30 minutes. And I think that they have, because we're requiring them the break to run concurrent to their current break, then I think those accommodations can be made. And so I would just like to provide that we just amend that sentence to just, just put, you know, an employer is required to provide reasonable break time under this chapter, period. You know, and so put it on the employer and the employee to come to an understanding of when it's reasonable, you know, and as close to feeding time as possible to preserve the nutritional value of the milk, et cetera, et cetera. But I just think that that'll work, and if we really are committed to this, we believe it's good. I think scientific evidence proves that it is, and that it will provide, you know, a healthier employee, a healthier baby, which would then allow that employee to not take time off from work, and all of the benefits that come with it. And so that would be the amendment I'm proposing to provide.
Okay. So on page six, line, line seven, after the word "required to provide," we would insert "reasonable break time" under this chapter, and put a period, and delete everything after that?
That's correct.
Does everybody get that? On that motion, on page six, ladies and gentlemen, are there anyone wishing to speak on the motion? If not, there's no objections? Motion carries. Speaker Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And once again, I want to, of course, commend the author and everyone else that participated in the formulation of this policy. You know, sometimes I say, man, do you need to pass a law to do something that's so common sense? Yes, sometimes you have to, you know? And if everybody would just treat it as that, let's all, you know, with some common sense, approach this policy, I think we're all going to do fine here, and the babies are going to do better. Thank you, Ensign Ms. Massey.
Haguma, Ben Povetso, Speaker Pangolinan, I also have Senator Tomato, who wishes to speak on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I certainly rise in support of the bill. I know that both my daughters were breastfed. I do have one question, though. The bill requires that the employer provide a paid break time, that the employer be required to provide a place, a private place, for the woman to be able to express her milk. But now, I guess I'm asked, the question I'm going to ask is, you know, it seems like we've only gone three-fourths of the way, and should the employer be required, then, to provide a refrigerator to store the milk?
I'm going to ask Senator Yamashita if she'd like to answer that. Thank you, Senator Ada.
Thank you for the question. I, what I am informed is that the refrigeration really isn't needed, that the milk can, it would still be good from the time it's expressed to the time she goes home. Because that question was raised. And what I was also told by different women in the private sector is that many of the businesses do have refrigerators, and they do label, but that it isn't necessarily so. And in fact, most mothers would actually bring, you know, those coolers that we put our drinks in, that they actually bring that in, they put the milk in the coolers, and it's fine.
Okay. All right, fine. Thank you very much. That's the only question I have. Thank you. But I do support the bill.
Thank you, Senator Ada. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, I'm going to ask Senator Yamashita to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, from the hearts and the tummies of all our growing children, from all of our growing families, mostly our younger ones, and then there's a lot of women who at mid-30s decide they're going to have babies, we thank you. We thank the leadership in this body for acknowledging, for supporting, for making this even better. The concerns about private and public, that word reasonable is there, and we already know that the private sector is very reasonable. We know our employees are reasonable because they want to keep their jobs, and that's the whole idea. They want to go to work, they want to raise healthy babies. And so we thank you very much for this. Madam Speaker, I'd like to add, Madam Speaker Wampat, as a co-sponsor, and Senator Tina Munia Barnes. Thank you.
On that motion, if there are no objections, motion carries. Would you like to move it to the voting pile?
I would like to move it to the voting pile.
On, no objections to moving it to the voting pile. Motion carries. It's seven till 12. It's seven till twelve right now. We'll go ahead and break for lunch until two o'clock this afternoon. Have a good lunch, everybody. We are in recess.